Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the December fifteenth Planning and Zoning Commission to meeting, to order. And if you'd stand with us, Commissioner Wilder would, will lead us in our invocation. And if I could, I'd like to lead us in the pledge.
Well, help out with this. I do, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for that beautiful sunshine this afternoon that we've all been looking forward to. Pastor, did you look over us this evening, guide us, help us to make the right decisions? I'll look over those that look after us in our community throughout the world. Pastor, to give everyone that took time out of their day to come be here tonight a safe drive home this evening. All these things in Jesus' name we ask. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if I could ask you to please silence your cell phones before the, the meeting gets underway. We do have all five commissioners tonight for a 100% quorum. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the December one meeting of this body. If there are no additions or amendments to that document, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most approve the minutes. Pass is four zero. We have one abstention. Gentlemen, you've also had a chance to review the agenda for tonight's meeting. If there are no additions or amendments to that agenda, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Most approve the agenda as submitted. Pass is five zero. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for their final action on January third, 2023, in these same chambers. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Christian. And, and she'll provide a request to speak for them. We're less formal in this body. If you have an item in our, one of our public hearings that you would like to address, either for or against, please raise your hand, come forward, and we'll ask you to take three to five minutes to give us your comments on the record that the Commissioners will have a chance to review before their meeting. There's a second opportunity for public comment if you'd like to participate and have an issue dealing with something other than what we have on the agenda. We'll have an opportunity at the end of the meeting for public comments. Raise your hand. Again, we'll ask you to come to the, to the, to the dais and take three to five minutes to, to give us the information that you'd like us to consider or to, to, to have on the record for the Commissioners to have for future reference. That being said, we'll move right into tonight's debate agenda. We've got, I'll have to reopen the public hearing for a variance two-two dash one-one dash zero-two. We have been asked to consider postponing this until January the fifth of 2023. However, since it has been advertised, we do have to, to conduct the public hearing. Ms. Mystery, I believe this is for you.
Yes, sir. This is a variation located at forty-one thirty Columbia Road on 3.5 acres. The zoning is C2 general commercial, and the request is a variation to allow overhead doors and to exceed glazing allowance for this new development. Here is the location, which is on the south side of Columbia Road. Here is the zoning that shows the C2. And it is in the Columbia Road Corridor Protection Overlay District. Close up of the aerial that shows the existing house that's there. Here's a plat of the property. A photograph of the site showing Columbia Road. And then the house that's on the, on the property. These are photographs of the site context. There's a Regent's Bank across the side, and the, the new public storage development was finished across the street as well. Here is the concept plan of the building. It shows the driveway that lines up with this one, where the retail center. And here's a close-up of the concept plan. So the building is proposed here. The overhead doors will be along this part that faces Columbia Road, and that's what the variation is for. A thirty-foot buffer is required between the development and the residential. The applicants have mentioned this is one of the ideas for the glass overhead doors. This was heard on November seventeenth originally, postponed to December the first, postponed to this meeting, but the applicants have requested more time to work out all the details. So their request is to postpone to January the fifth. There was a meeting with the Spring Lakes residents and board last night, and several items were discussed regarding the, the building design, site design, buffers, fences, et cetera, but no decisions have been made yet. We, we still waiting the actual new rendering that they showed us last night. Staff is recommending postponing to January fifth.
Thank you. So we've received no updated elevations. We've got nothing that's any different from the package that we considered last time?
Correct. We just saw what they proposed last night.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, any other questions? All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak either for or against? Yes, ma'am. Please give us your name and home address.
Sandra Tanner, and I was here at the last meeting.
Yes, ma'am. I remember well.
And I was told about the meeting last night, and what she says about the residents were involved in this meeting, that is not true. No residents were involved, were advised that they were meeting with Davis and a few of your board members. It was apparently a couple of members of the HOA?
Dr. Rocco.
Huh?
One of the other speakers. Rocco knew about it. The others knew about it. Rocco told me he did not want to show up last night.
We were not told about it.
Not that, Rocco? Dr. Cadel that was there last night.
None of, none of the residents, residents who are involved in this variance were there. And what I was told is last night, and you can clarify this or not, that now they're talking about, before the retention pond was going to be on my end of the property, you know, toward me. Now I was told that they're now talking about putting the retention pond on the opposite side of the building.
Yes, ma'am. And, and we've seen nothing, to the effect, we've seen absolutely zero.
Well, I won't be here at the next meeting, so y'all will be safe, because I'm having knee replacement surgery beginning of January, so I won't be able to attend. That's why I wanted to come and voice my opinion tonight.
It's not that bad. I've had it.
I've had hips, and I'm okay with hips, but knee, I'm regretting. But anyway, if they move retention pond to the opposite side of the building, I don't understand where that's going to do any good to help my runoff, because that's a piece of flat land. It's flat land, the house, and then the property starts sloping down.
But again, they'll do the same thing that we discussed before, where they'll have to engineer that entire site so they can't throw water on you. So they'll, they'll have to design the site so it, the, the grade actually makes the water flow over to that other side. So it's going to help you regardless. If, 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 if this is approved, and I'm not saying it is.
Ma'am, I, you know, we talked before, they cannot legally throw water back on you on any surface. And if they do, then you can get after us, and I don't want to see that.
I can just say that one of your former commissioners?
Well, that's the bad thing to listen to.
And he intentionally threw water on my property, so I don't, you know.
I'm just telling you, we can't legally.
Ma'am, ma'am, the, the plan they're showing with that pond actually is going to run the water out toward the road.
But how, how is a pond going to work if it's on the piece of flat land? You've got the flat land, then the building that's going to be concrete and everything else, and then you have the?
They'll balance the site, so they'll move dirt, so it has to force it that direction. It won't be flat. There'll be some grade there.
And then they were?
Just like, have you noticed how a road's curved? So it pushes water off to both sides? You don't have flat roads. Well, might South Carolina, but not in Georgia.
As long as you've been living there, I promise you, when they get through, you'll have a lot better situation than you have had.
Well, I've got, right now it's pretty good, because I've worked on it since nineteen ninety.
Well, I understand all that, but it's not going to be worse, I promise you.
And then my other thing was, apparently last night, and I heard you were one of the members there last night, that they're planting evergreen trees to help block the, the noise in the site.
No idea. We haven't seen a plan. And we, we got nothing out of the meeting last night.
Well, this thirty-foot buffer that's shown across here, that will have new trees planted that will supplement existing trees that are there too. So the whole point of this buffer is to create a visual privacy between the residents and the building.
Okay, but is, you're showing the buffer just on the backside of the property. My side of the property is over here.
Right. The buffer will, will be, like, you can see it moves out here, across there, and then cross the?
And I actually, bad as my knee hurt, I actually walked up there today on the sidewalk I did not trespass, and took pictures of the lay of the land, how it goes down. And I mean, you can stand on my deck, you can stand in my kitchen window, which I have pictures of, you can stand in my bathroom upstairs, and you see this property just perfect, you know? And I don't care to sit on my deck, or sit in my kitchen, and have to look at a, a business operating seven days a week up there.
Or would you prefer to be there?
I don't know what I would prefer to be there.
Nothing?
But, no, I don't, that, I'm not that stupid. I mean, the land, the land is for sale. I understand that.
Sir, can I ask you to remove your cap while you're inside? Take your cap off, please, sir. Look, you don't, okay, I'm sorry. My eyes aren't as good. I wish I had hair like that.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I understand that something's going to be there. All I'm worried about is how they're going to present it so that, that, that our property is not affected financially by what they're doing. You know, that, that they're going to hide the property, you know, kind of buffer, as you use the word buffer, that they're going to buffer the looks of it so that I can sit out on my deck, or, or sit in my kitchen, and not have to see?
And you realize this is not the Augusta National. They're not going to plant fifty-foot trees. This is going to take time to grow in if they plant it.
That was another thing that these, I bet these residents are going to complain, because I thought of that today, when they said they were planting evergreens. They're going to plant evergreens probably this high, that are going to take thirty years to grow.
You know, that's something Jonathan can probably help mitigate there.
Yeah, that'll, that'll certainly be part of the site plan review process, which is not what we're here tonight and eventually on January fifth. But certainly, that's part of the, the requirements of the, the code, is to ensure that the buffer meets the requirements. And then, and in this particular case, we know that there are pine trees that are, you know, significant height. But again, that, most of that vegetation is certainly above, say, the eight, ten, twelve-foot range. So supplemental plantings that will be required where they need to be planted, our landscape architect will help review that and make sure that the appropriate species are in place. And to your point, you know, we have minimum dimensional standards for, or nominal standards for those plants, so they won't be, you know, little twig trees. They will actually be real trees. They may not be ten, twelve feet in planting, but they will be, you know, probably, there'll, there'll be at least two, two and a half inches in caliper for the trees and shrubs. So we'll, we'll work with the developer to create a plan that will do as much mitigation off the bat immediately. Obviously, it will take a little bit of time for that to grow in and grow out, but that's part of the requirements of the code regardless of, you know, the variation tonight, or?
Yeah, all I'm trying to do is protect the value of my property.
Sure, understand that.
But we can't carry on with the conversation with you, that everybody could, an educated conversation, let's say, because we hadn't seen the plan either, until we see it. And if we may see something that we don't like, that we could address that would help you. But right now, this minute, we don't have a clue.
Like I said, I came to voice my opinion tonight, because I cannot be here on the fifth, because I'm having surgery on the floor.
Oh, that's fine. But we can't do anything to help you beyond what we've already talked about.
But it'll be in the minutes, the complaints.
That's okay.
And again, remember, this is just a recommending body, so this will have to go to the Commissioners, and you'll have time to get to PT and get moving.
Variation.
Oh, this is a variation, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Forgive me, I just got excited.
Okay. Variances, and it's not a variation.
And with that, ma'am, I'm going to ask you to sit down and yield the microphone to someone else.
Can I leave?
You may.
I just want to mention, so I know you said you're not going to be here at the meeting on the fifth, but our report and recommendation will be available the Friday before. So if you call our office, you'll get that.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Good luck with your surgery. Yes, sir, would you like to come forward, give us your name and home address?
My name is Rocco Sica, R-O-C-C-O, last name S-I-C-A. I live at forty-one forty-one Bent Tree Lane, which abuts the proposed property here. I just want to start this evening by saying thank you to the Commission, and the Commissioners, in part for the outreach done by the Commissioners following last meeting, and also just to, to emphasize and thank you for your, some of your statements already this evening, but your role here in holding people accountable to the zoning ordinances and making sure that everyone is complying with the rules as they are written. You know, I know that everyone on this Commission and everyone here at this meeting today cares vehemently about this community and the growth in this community, that they're trying to protect home values, and, you know, that they're trying to enact the, the development plan that's been envisioned, that's been put down into the zoning ordinances, and put down into the plans and Vision 2035 Plan that has been put forward by the county and the state. I referenced the Vision 2035 Plan because, you know, Commissioner Cox, last time I spoke at this meeting, asked me, and asked again today, what else would you have put in this spot if it wasn't Mavis Discount Tire? And I don't have to answer that question. I gave you my answer last time. The Vision 2035 Plan actually says what should be developed in this spot, because it's a part of the mixed-use activity center. And mixed-use activity centers per the Vision 2035 Plan are characterized by compact, walkable, high-density developments. These areas provide a mixed use that include neighborhood and regional commercial uses, employment opportunities, gathering spots, and residential uses. Townhomes, loft apartments, condominiums, that contribute to a live-work-play environment. Future development should emphasize high-quality building and site design, including dedicated open civic space and connectivity.
So you'd rather see apartments? You'd rather see apartments?
I would be fine with apartments there. I think Columbia County has a, 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 a housing shortage, so I think that's probably something that would be fine there. You know, what I, when I, when I go through the Vision 2035 Plan, what I see there and what I think is, you know, absent from there is auto repair shops. You know, when it goes through the specific caveats about light industrial usage, which the auto repair shop is, it says that that should be done on the periphery of the, the center, not directly next to a residential area. And the 2035 Plan, for my purposes, just is, is, is what we're all working towards. Working, working towards development, we're talking, working towards growth in the community. And also, it, it's interesting, because that plan provides a conflict with what the zoning ordinances say. Because the zoning ordinances say they can build a, a vehicle repair shop in this C2F. I'm not here to debate that. But it is showing and highlighting for the Commission and the Commissioners, the conflict between the zoning ordinances and the plan for development. And, you know, further, the Vision 2035 Plan speaks to this and how we should interpret a conflict, and says that evaluation and adoption of changes to development regulations should be expected after adoption of this comprehensive plan. The purpose of zoning and subdivision ordinances are to ensure that local regulatory tools support the implementation of the future development map and specify the goals in this plan. The comprehensive plan is intended to provide the legal nexus for the application of these development regulations. That says to me that this authority and the Commissioners have the authority to make the changes necessary to ensure that development on this property is consistent with the future development.
So to make that happen, we'd have to, to have a request to devise, or to, to author a text amendment by one of the Commissioners that would be worked through, come before this body for, for approval, then go to them.
Yeah, map amendment, really, but yeah, two options would be, one, the owner of the property couldn't offer an initiated rezoning request to something other than C2 in this instance, that may be more consistent with the, the comprehensive plan if that's the case, or the, the county could initiate a rezoning. But again, that is really kind of the two main options you'd see.
So we update our plan, minor revisions every five years, a major revision every ten years. That's the rule?
Technically, they're all considered major anymore, but yeah. About every five years, we typically do it.
What chaos would it create if we had to, to adjust or amend every ordinance to comply with what an out-of-town company comes in and recommends we do?
Well, whether it's out of town or in, in town, you know, as the landowner, you know.
But we've only got seven folks that, that are, are, the state approves to come in and do one of those plans, if I remember correctly.
That's not true at all.
I thought there were seven approved vendors through?
No. Absolutely not.
Okay.
Who, who told you? That's interesting. I'm curious.
One of the Commissioners told me that.
Oh, that's a lot.
Let me, let me, can I say something right there? Where are you headed with what you're talking about? I don't see any, any end to what you're saying.
So, so I, I have a little bit more left to go, if that's all right. I, I, I was just answering the questions about what I would like to see and what I think the appropriate put things that, that was a question asked to me about the commission last night.
It's really not relative to what we need to do tonight.
I was also asked by Russell Wilder, the other Commissioner, about to, to, to go look at the Christian Brothers, you know, auto service repair shop that's on Washington Road, because he just suggested it was comparable.
Chimney Hill.
I'm sorry?
It's in front of Chimney Hill.
Just, he, he suggested it was comparable, and I, I couldn't help but notice the differences. In contrast to this location, there's a hundred and fifty-foot buffer between the residential area and the, the, the building area. There is no variation that?
Wetlands back there. There's wetlands behind it.
Well, I, I'm more worried about the separation of residential housing and, and an industrial use. And there is no variation there that puts the doors on the front. Those doors are still on the side, and those are, those start, the whole building starts another fifty feet from that buffer. So it's really two hundred feet between the houses and the, 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 the repair shop. I'm just saying that because we have somebody here who's asking for a variation. That's where I'm asking the Commission to hold the people who are asking these questions and asking for these variations accountable to what they're doing, because it's important. I also note, just for the record, that they've asked for a variation on one item. They have not asked for variations on all the applicable aspects that I think are covered under the overlay. They have not asked for a variation that would require a screening, a full visual screening of any loading area. In fact, they're trying to put the loading area at the front of the building. And I, according to ninety-nine ninety-nine C2.
Mr. Sica, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, because you've gone over the five minutes, and I'd like to give other people an opportunity to speak if they'd like.
Absolutely. My ask solely is, my final ask is, I also cannot be here on January fifth. I believe it's in the Commission's power to put it on the next following meeting and request that you postpone to that following date so that myself, as well as any other interested party from the Spring Lake community can attend and speak in person.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone as requested until January the fifth, or any other date that the Commissioners would think is appropriate.
Commissioner, I will make a recommendation. We postpone.
Two. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Postpone to January fifth? Motion to postpone carries five zero. Next item, we've got an architectural review. Ms. Mystery?
Yes, sir. This is an architectural review for forty-nine seventy-five Gateway Boulevard. It's 2.77 acres, and the current zoning is P1 for professional. And the project is Augusta ENT Grove Town, and this is for compliance with the rezoning condition. Here is the location of the site on the south side of Gateway Boulevard. The zoning is P1. And here's a close-up of the aerial, and the Quest Church is next door. The approved site plan was on October this year. And these are the elevations they've submitted for your review. It does show a modern office building in different materials. And go to the next one as well. They've shown us the four elevations. Top one is the one facing the parking lot. The bottom one is facing the Quest Church. And there is a selection of materials using brick stucco, glazing, and porcelain tile, and wood cladding as well. And overall, it fits in with the existing area and the context with the church, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing. So I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the architectural review for Augusta ENT, located at forty-nine seventy-five Gateway Boulevard.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? To approve the architectural review passes five zero. Mr. Douglas, we've got a minor waiver, file MW two-two dash one-two dash zero-one.
Yes, sir. This is a minor waiver at three-one-seven Avenue on Drive. It's roughly point one-four acre plot in the Tillery Park subdivision development. This is it illustrated in the PRD-zoned Tillery Park subdivision development. And this is an illustration of the site plan. If you see the red writing in the middle of the site plan illustrates that the slab for the house foundation is thirty-five feet wide, leaving the minimum building lines or setbacks on the side, sides of the property at seven and a half feet. However, the sheathing and siding for the house is going to extend into those setbacks a couple inches on either side. And so staff authorized and approved a reduction from those seven and a half foot side setbacks within the 10% allowed minor waiver threshold. Those minimum, those side setbacks are being reduced from seven and a half feet to six feet and nine inches. And we authorized that approval on December second.
It doesn't say it on our agenda, but this is an information only?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it. That's what I thought. I just want to make sure. And you might as well stay up here. Mr. Douglas, we've got a massage operator's license.
Yes, sir. So both of these massage operators licenses you see are going to be operating out of one oh eight North Bel Air Road, which is a location that we had these applicants come in and get a condition, approval of their conditional use for massage for just a couple weeks ago. They are continuing through that process toward opening for operation. And so this is their notification to the Planning Commission that they have received their state licensing and are continuing through that process.
So is that the presentation for both, but we'll need to take those motions separately?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay. All right. So first, I'll need a motion for the massage operator's license, either to approve, disapprove, or postpone, or line item H2 Charlie one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for eleven-eleven Wellness Studio at one oh eight.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve passes five zero. Now I'll need a motion for line item H2 Charlie two.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve INP Group, Little Thai Wellness, one oh eight North Bell.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve passes five zero. We do have a final plat tonight for Highland Lakes Section Three. Ms. Montgomery?
Yes, sir. This is a final plat for Section Three of Highland Lakes, located off William Few Parkway, and currently zoned R2 Single Family Residential. This is the location of Highland Lakes on the south side of William Few. The area outlined in black is the location of Section Three. This section of the development includes a hundred and one single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 10,012 square feet, which does meet the minimum requirements for the R2 zoning district. The average lot size is 11,705 square feet in this section. The lots will have minimum front setbacks of 55 feet from the central line of the roads, and minimum side and rear setbacks of 10 feet. There are a couple lots down at the bottom that are accessed via shared driveways here. That is due to the presence of an island in the middle of the road that kind of limits full access there for, for typical front-loading driveways. Sidewalks and street trees are to be provided on both sides of the roads, and 0.53 acres of open spaces provided in this section. And this shows the islands down at the, the south end of the site, as well as the parking area for their, their future community amenity that'll be off of the, the south end of the section. And staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Highland Lakes Section Three, located off William Few.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve passes five zero. I'll go ahead and open the public hearings tonight. Mr. Douglas, we've got file RZ two-two dash one-two dash zero-seven, a minor S1 revision.
Chairman, this is not a public?
This won't be, even though it's a rezoning?
It's a minor.
It's a minor revision.
It's minor, okay. So we, so I will not open a public hearing. I thought it, I thought in, in the, in the meeting, we said this would be a public hearing. Okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah. So this is a minor revision to the S1 zoning narrative for four-seven-nine-eight Hardy McManus Road. It's a Journey Community Church. It's a twenty-four and a half foot roughly acre lot, as illustrated here on the south side of Hardy McManus Road, near the intersection of Haley Lee Farm Road and Hardy McManus Road. This shows its zoning across from several subdivisions. Again, it's already in operation as a church, so it already holds its S1 zoning, and this is a minor revision to their expansion plans that we'll go over here. To, a couple things I'd like you to know. Again, it's already in operation as a church, so it already holds its S1 zoning, and this is a minor revision to their expansion plans that we'll go over here. To a couple of things I'd like you to know on the this aerial is the very, I guess, open area over here on the left that is grass is going to be developed as parking. And we'll go over the site plan here in a second. And then to take note of this white roofed building at the top corner of the cluster of buildings right there is already in existence. The previous site plan that we approved in 2016 had that as a proposed structure, and now it is completed. This is a copy of the property's plat. And then this is the previously mentioned approved 2016 site plan again. This is the phase one of the building that this narrative approved, and it now is in existence. The phase two for this plan was approved for the second half of that building over here to the the right of that completed section of the building. Additionally, on this rendering, they also have the an added entrance. Sorry, all the way over here on the left side of the the westernmost section of the property to the larger parking lot that they're now seeking to develop. That will also be a that will also be an aspect of the revised plan that they are seeking to get approved tonight as well. So this is the revised plan that they're seeking to get approved this evening. Again, in the top right corner of the cluster of the buildings, you'll see the completion of the larger sanctuary building that they're proposing. That will proceed in two phases. They'll pave the foundation effectively for that expansion of the building. And it will be an outdoor, again paved like patio meeting and social space until at which time the church is begins the process of completing that structure. Additionally, at the base of the existing administrative and classroom building, you see this rectangle at the very southernmost point of the cluster of buildings. That is actually a two-story expansion onto that building. It's roughly 3,000 square feet on both floors for a 6,000 foot expansion to that building. It'll be additional administrative and classroom space as well. And up on the the road frontage illustrated here for Hardy McManus Road, you'll see that the middle existing entrance is illustrated in gray because that entrance will actually be removed and no longer in existence on the property as a part of these expansion plans. And again, all the way to the westernmost point of the parking lot, they are going to install a new entrance to replace that previous one as well as a right turn deceleration lane. Additionally, at the southernmost point of the parking lot, on the previous approved expansion plans, there wasn't this added section of parking lot down to the west and south of the retention pond, but that has been added since then. And then finally, on the very easternmost portion of the property, you'll see a slightly different hatch pattern section of parking lot near the back. That is listed on these plans as being proposed for paving. It's not listed in either of the in any of the phases or any of the plans to necessarily be paved, but I think they would like to pave that in the future if they were allowed to. And then, sorry, as a closing note, if you can see it, it might be somewhat difficult to see. There's an easement running across the parking lot and near the top edge of the retention pond. That is a water utility line easement for this property, and we have a condition regarding that written into this, the conditions for approval for this site plan, this concept plan.
I know long ago, we approved River Oaks with the condition they had to have a second exit via an emergency entrance. How's this going to affect that emergency entrance, will it?
If I could go back to the last slide, please. Yeah. Before I finished on this slide, I wanted to make sure that the the planning commission was aware. The one issue that the that staff is running into regarding these expansion plans, it seemingly is the the only issue, and we have conditions put in place to deal with that, is along this the easternmost access for this property. There is a an emergency access easement that runs.
I've drawn on the map for so 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 we can see and also the members of the audience can see.
Yeah, sorry. So back along here and back into the the River Oaks subdivision at the back of this property, along roughly where I've drawn this red line, there is an easement that was granted by the church to the county for emergency access because the River Oaks subdivision at the back of the property for the church needs, per Columbia County Code, two emergency access easements. So if, for example, there were a fire back there and for whatever reason, the front entrance of that neighborhood was blocked, fire rescue vehicles would use this emergency access easement to gain access to that subdivision and address any fire or emergency that was taking place in that subdivision. Part of the conditions that we've set in place as a part of review of our review for this property is that the fire marshal has set in place that there's an the emergency access easement. Any changes that need to be made to it need to be put on record before you know, the church proceeds with approval of site plan or breaking ground on any of the work that they're proposing in this application. Additionally, we, the planning staff, have added that based on the fire marshal's requirements, any slight modifications of the site plan would be allowed during the plan review stage of this process, which is the process that immediately follows the approval of their minor revision that we're reviewing here today. And then the last condition that I'm is the one I mentioned concerning the water main running across the property. It just simply states that no trees or large shrubs can be planted within the confines of that easement for that water utility, that water main, so that no adverse effects will come to that that pipe.
Thank you, sir. This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve with conditions, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ22-12-07, Minor S1 Revision at 4798 Hardy McManus Road to revise the approved site plan.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve passes five zero. So now I'll open the public hearing. Ms. Montgomery, file RZ22-12-05, Master Sign Plan, Tax Map 072 Alpha Parcel 368.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a master sign plan at 444 North Bel Air Road for a multi-tenant building. Use the technical difficulties here. This property is located on the west side of North Bel Air Road, near Town Park Lane, and is currently zoned C1 Neighborhood Commercial. There's quite a lot of planned unit development around it for the Town Park Development as well as for the University Medical Complex. Immediately adjacent properties to the north are zoned Community Commercial or Neighborhood Commercial as well. And there's still some residential parcels up there off Marie Street at North Bel Air Road. This is the aerial of the site showing the existing building. And this was the original rendering for the the permitting of the the building. So you can see the intended signage on the building. They did intend to name the building and then have the the tenant signage on the first floor with this rendering. And that is largely what happened, although they chose to use the address for the the building name portion. That's for the existing principal sign on the front of the building. Now, county sign code does treat kind of the first floor of this building and the second and third floors a little differently. For multi-tenant buildings, the sign code differs based on whether they have their own exterior door or not. So the three suites on the first floor that have their individual entrance doors are each allowed an individual wall sign. The second and third floors share a common entrance on the back of the building, so you can't see it on this particular picture. Since they have a common entrance and they share that entrance space, this building is allowed one principal wall sign on each wall of the building visible from the road. That's not per tenant. That is just for the second and third floors total, they're allowed one sign. Currently, that's being that's the the 444 that they've used as the the principal sign on this wall. So allowed signage per code would be the the one sign on each building wall. They do have the existing freestanding sign that's already in place. The master sign plan is really just addressing the principal wall signage, so that's mostly what we'll be discussing with this plan. The proposal is instead of doing the one sign on each wall, to add two additional tenant panels on the front wall only. So these would be the only principal wall signs allowed. We have the three for the individual ground floor tenants that are already in place, and then the two additional ones on the front wall. The 444 numbers would move down the wall, so they would keep that sign. So there would be essentially the three ground floor tenant signs and then the three additional principal building signs for the second and third floors. With the master sign plan, there would be no additional principal wall signage allowed. The effect of this is actually to limit the signage more than would normally be allowed under code. So then, in a slightly unusual case, we have a master sign plan that is actually more restrictive than the county code as far as square footage allowance. And I said this is just addressing the principal wall signage, so the county code still allows the freestanding tenant signs as well as miscellaneous directional signs, both freestanding on the site and tenant directory signage. For example, the tenant panel next to the rear entrance door would be allowed as a miscellaneous sign. Now, this is in the Evans Town Center area. This is a mixed-use activity center. This is also an overlay district. In terms of the overlay district requirements, there is an intention for this area to have kind of a unique character. And one of the things that's intended to tie that together is coordinated signage for the properties. One of the things with the proposed master sign plan, the tenant panels are proposed to all be the same color, so that is a step in the right direction. The two additional tenant panels proposed are taller than the existing ones on the first floor. So we are recommending a condition to keep those all the same height so that the proportions stay the same and they do coordinate on this front wall. It's also implied that the lettering for these signs will be primarily white lettering. If you can see kind of what's currently there, the Lash Studios primarily white with an accent pink for their Lash Studio sign. The proposed sign for First Date is also white lettering. As I said, it's implied in the master sign plan that this theme would be carried throughout the additional signage. We have proposed a condition just clarifying that that would be expected to keep the signage tied together on this front wall. So we do have are recommending approval with the two conditions that the wall signs shall be channel letters centered on the proposed or existing sign bands with the primary color for those channel letters being white with any color allowed as an accent color for up to 35% of the sign. We did come to that based on the sign permit for the existing sign for the Lash Studio to make sure they would stay compliant. And the sign bands for the principal wall wall signs shall be the same height and width, two and a half feet by 17 feet as the existing sign bands on the first floor. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Is there anything you'd like to add? Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ22-12-05, Master Sign Plan at 444 North Bel Air Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Most to approve passes five zero. Ms. Mystery, file RZ22-12-06, Major PUD Revision, Tax Map 082 Juliet.
Yes, sir. This is a major plan revision at 3801 Park Lane. It's 0.72 acres and the zoning is PUD Planned Unit Development. There is there is an existing building on the site and the request is for the revision of the site plan. Here is the location at the corner of Furious Ferry and Park Lane. The zoning is PUD, which is a light blue. And this is a close up of the area showing the existing building. These are site views of the existing site and a plat of the property. This is what we've got from our GIS department for 1988 and 2000 aerials. See that the the road was going this way and then it lined up. What that did was it left the utilities on part of this property, and that was one of the reasons why the applicant wants to revise the site plan. And this is the current map showing the utilities, and you can see the blue water line right there going through the front of the property. So the 2017 plan that was approved for the PUD showed the building up on Furious Ferry, parking at the back and the side, and then the future connection for the PUD, commercial PUD that's to the north of the property but on the east of the screen. And this was proposed as an office and light retail building. The adjacent PUD was approved in 2019, and the changes to that site plan require the buildings to be up front on Furious Ferry and leave the parking and the driveway all to the back with the connection as well. One of the revisions that was submitted in 2021 was this plan. It showed the building close up to the adjacent residential. There were some site issues with the location of the dumpster that was going to be in this location right here. And there were several issues with the buffers, et cetera, that the the staff were not happy with, and the recommendation was for disapproval, and this was withdrawn. The the current plan is shown here, and that has included the connection to the adjacent PUD where the where the blue arrow is. And the the plan is the building is brought up on Furious Ferry with the parking to the rear and the side. So this is the proposed plan showing the building at the front with the dumpster location here, which is away from the residential. The driveway access will be off Park Lane. With this, there will be some restriping required, which will be addressed as part of the plan review part of this project. The 20-foot buffer width has been shown, and the dumpster is in the location away from the residential. These are the renderings of the new building from the applicant, showing a modern office building design that fits in with the character of Furious Ferry and some of the new buildings along there. These are the other views of that. And we've also included a rendering that show where the potential signage would be so that we assign on Furious Ferry for the main building, one on Park Lane, and then two signs here on the retails, retail tenants on the first floor. This is in the neighborhood section of the future land use map, and it's also along the professional corridor for Furious Ferry, so nothing is changing with the land uses. And staff is recommending approval for the request to revise the site plan with conditions that buffers and landscaping require coordination with a county landscape architect to determine the best solutions to give privacy and to maintain the beautification of the corridor. A landscape plan will be prepared by a landscape licensed landscape architect shall be provided at site plan review. A phonometric plan showing foot candle readings of one or less at the property line shall be provided prior to approval of the site plan. All lighting on the site shall be shielded and directed away from residential properties and provide documentation of construction access easement agreement with a parcel to the north prior to site plan approval. And just just for a record, we've had several calls and emails about this rezoning. The ones that were sent in last week were included with your package. We had several today. We had two emails that were in objection to this development from John Arnold and Terry McNeely. And we had several calls that were in favor of this development from Nicole Martinez, Sandra Bednarz, Lynn Powell, Crystal Rickerman, Mark Willis, and Mark Herbert, and Stephanie Umstead as well. So I just wanted to update you on that.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Mr. Lawrence, would you like to add anything?
No.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Quarter. All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular? I see three, four, five. Okay. Let's start in the back. We'll move forward. This man, please give us your name and home address.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Danielle Farr. I live at 551 Forest Crossing. Property. In 2001, when we came out, we met, talked about the structural buffer. and your conditions, which I have here. It says, "The building set back to the site property will be, residence will be twenty-five foot minimum." As we see, it's twenty. There is an easement in my yard, which, where the water. The dumpster, it shows, well, it was stated that it is away from the property. The property is very small, is also shaped like a bowl. And then it slopes down into my yard. So anything, even if the property is raised, which you'll hear about in a few minutes, even if the property is raised, anything from that dumpster is going to go right down into my yard and then flow down right into area, which has been touched upon last year. That's an issue and that worries me because my property will, I won't be able to use my backyard. Another issue with the structural buffer is, say they did decide to do evergreen trees. It takes five to thirty years for an evergreen tree to reach about twenty foot. That means I will be staring at whatever's back there. Probably be, there'll be a parking lot directly behind my house in a dumpster, which, as we know from Zaxby's, lots of people hanging out in the parking lot right behind my house where I raise my children. That worries me. Now they cannot bring new evergreen trees in that are at mature height. They can only transplant if the trunk diameter is two inches or less. Evergreen trees have a very aggressive root system. And I've spoken with and worked with the master gardeners at UGA for this information. Another major issue for me, because I'm right there, and Zaxby's doesn't really do it because they have two entrances in and out. This has one. I believe it's four to five businesses that will be in that property. Only way in and out is onto Park Lane. And when I emailed about that, I was told, well, we might, what did she say? Traffic engineering may accommodate and basically fix the road. So now the road's going to be closed right there if they have to do that because directly across from that entrance and exit is a median and double solid lines on both sides. So they can't turn left to use that light because that's not legal, as I remember, because my son just passed a permit test and we went over those. There's so many issues. The revision plan that frightened me for myself and my neighborhood. You are bringing in, there's a code in your code and ordinance that says, "You cannot bring in traffic into an existing neighborhood." That's what will happen. They will have to go through the neighborhood. We're already having street problems in there. It's all torn up. There's all kinds of cones and cones in the road. I don't know what that's all about. That's going to create an issue. It's going to be like a parade. And with the traffic coming through, going to Lakeside and coming out of Lakeside, that's going to be an issue. One entrance and exit is not feasible. And I understand that there's a commercial property next door. I don't know if that's been sold yet. The sign says, "For sale." So I don't know what's planned for that. But the conditions last meeting did mention that you would have to collaborate with them and revise that plan for that property. I don't know if it's been resold or what. And if, there's the structural buffer that he has listed right here too, says twenty. But in your conditions, it says twenty-five. So that needs to be extended at least five feet. We'll cut down. And see how it looks like the dumpster is far away? That property is so small that that's like, I mean, look at it. Drawings are very... When you look at, I mean, I've sent pictures in. It's not far away at all. So there would be a dumpster in my backyard and the property next door. The lighting issue with the trees, I mean, great, we're going to have trees. In about twenty years, those trees will block out that light. I already have light issues. I'm already having lighting issues from spotlight from the house that has been ongoing since the last meeting in twenty-twenty-one. And I keep being told that it gets, it's going to be taken care of and it will be taken care of. However, I was told it was taken care of the other day, morning at four-thirty-five this morning, right in there. I mean, so I can't trust these plans to that. And those lights will not only affect me, they'll affect across the street, next door and all the way back.
All right, Ms. Farr, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up so we can, we can...
That's about it.
On your other neighbor.
Sorry. Thank you very much for having me.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, somebody else on the back row would like to come forward? Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Good evening. My name is Peter Brown. I live on five-fifty Forest Crossing. I spoke last year as well. Thank you for giving me the time. I'm obviously, as with everyone in the neighborhood, in objection against this revision. I know the names that were said in support, I've never heard of any of them. I don't think they live in our neighborhood, so their interests are not going to be aligned with the actual residents. The people who objected are all residents in the neighborhood. So I will not hit so much on the dumpster and things like that that Mrs. Farr has already hit, but I will stress again that that trash will flow down into my yard and my yard is the one you see when they showed the picture showing the lot. That's my front porch there. So that will flow down into my yard. I already get it from Zaxby's. It will flow into Reed Creek, which is a protected wildlife area. It's not going to help putting it back a little bit, having, for lack of a better term, a... Well, I'll put it like this. I do not trust that the buffer would stop that. I do not think that dumpster is in a great place, but I'll move beyond that. The traffic is horrendous as it is. Now you're having not only the five businesses here, but anything in the residential, the commercial property behind it will have to flood there through my house. We'll get more cut through from the back part of the neighborhood. And what that brings in is also unknown people in the neighborhood. I'm raising a three-year-old son and you would be able to watch him play in my front yard from these five businesses. It is not, I understand, it's on that corridor where they're developing commercial properties. This is a neighborhood. You cannot say it's something else just because there's a possibility that someone can line their pockets. You are affecting people's lives, you are affecting families. You're bringing in an unwanted element that's not needed. Protect the neighborhood in this area. There's empty commercial properties up and down Furious Ferry. There's empty commercial properties all over Martinez and Evans. Why are we building more? Why are we trying to ruin the housing that is there, the neighborhood quality that we have? It seems counterproductive to me and I don't understand it. And as long as he keeps bringing these revisions, we're going to keep coming up to speak out against it. What else did I want to say? Excuse me. So the other thing I want to point out, and then I will leave flooding in that because there's someone else who that impacts much more deeper, although I do get flooding in my house. Luckily, it's on a hill, so I'm able to avoid it for my actual home, but my lawn floods out and everything. I will say that you should be trying to make buildings match the neighborhood. This two-story tacky strip mall looks absolutely outrageous. It's right next to a bunch of homes that were built in the eighties, single-family homes, and we have this? Again, that's my front porch. I'm going to come out and sit on my front porch and look at a parking lot with this, I don't even know what it is on it, as opposed to a nice house in a green lawn and green space. I don't, I do not feel it fits in with the aesthetic of the neighborhood. I don't think that getting rid of more lawn and grass and green space in that neighborhood is a good idea. I understand people want progress. I understand people want development, but it's not worth the cost of my home and where my child is being raised.
Mr. Brown, with that, I'm going to ask you to yield the microphone to one of your neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
I live at five-six-nine Forest Crossing. Although what's going on right here currently affects me indirectly, but progress is coming down. Eventually, the future progress will affect me directly. My primary concerns tonight is I am for development, however, it needs to be done in a respectful way where, like everyone else has said, our homes and our property values need to be protected. My primary concern overall is the entrance that's going to be affected is the main entrance in and out of our subdivision. It is the only entrance that we have where we can have a light to make a left and a right. The second thing that concerns me is the flooding. I'm one of the older residents in the neighborhood. I've been living in my home since the nineteen nineties. I have witnessed three times torrential rains that we have yet to experience and some of my newer neighbors have yet to experience. The flooding in our neighborhood is atrocious when we have the torrential rain. Someone up here assured me that with this development, that runoff and that rain, all that's going to be included in the plan indirectly. We are in a flood zone already. The property Furious Ferry across the street in my backyard, you all have come in and raised everything up so high that my home is no longer one of the highest level landform homes in the neighborhood anymore. I go out in my backyard and I, Furious Ferry is level with my four-foot deck out back. So that's another concern. The land level's going up around me, but my home is now getting lower and lower. The flooding concerns me. The other thing that concerns me about this gentleman's property is the parking lot in the back between our homes where the businesses are on Furious Ferry. The parking lot is in the back and then there's our backyards. That concerns me. Years ago, when the gentleman that lives in India owned the property behind the house, we, the original homeowners along that strip, attempted to buy the property behind us. The day we were going to make our present, presental to purchase that property, zoning was changed to business. The other issue that I have is the lighting. My backyard is lit up. It's lit up from all the businesses across the street, the nursing home that's directly behind my house. I feel like I live in an airport. The light that's coming off those businesses and the driveway, the cars going in and out, I'm constantly under a spotlight. That needs to be considered development, especially with this being the main entrance.
Okay, Ms. Wood, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and wrap it up for us, please.
Wrapping it up, thank you. In summary, my concerns, primary entrance, the flooding, the parking lot being in the back, buffer, the lighting issue. Please take all that into consideration when you are developing the area.
Thank you, ma'am. Was there somebody else on the back row that wanted to speak? Okay. Please come forward and I'm going to ask you to not be repetitive with what we've already heard.
Chad McNeeley, I live at five-oh-three Oak Chase.
You spell your last name, please.
M-C-N-E-E-L-Y. My wife sent the email. Part of this is kind of a last-minute thing, but I can show my support for my neighbors that live up front and I understand their heartache. They, we've had, this is about the third or fourth plan, I think, Mr. Lawrence is trying to come up with. And I don't blame him for trying to make some money. I would too. But in this instance, do y'all take in consideration the plans before this one? Every time it's revised, is it a whole new, is it a clean slate or is it...
Clean slate, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, for the record, could I ask you to maybe incorporate the old plans and visions and take those into consideration also? We have a lot of...
I'm not sure why you would do that because the old plans don't have anything with the new plan. They can come up as, he can revise his plan a hundred times if he wants to.
Right, right. But if you revise a plan and as soon as it comes up with, say, the buffer's not code or whatever, like right now, I think I heard before...
But he can't revise the plan and not be in code. They're not going to approve the plan to come forward if it's...
Okay, I thought, I must have misheard. I thought he said twenty-five foot and now it's twenty feet.
And I'm not sure about that. That's, that's been so long, I don't know, I don't know if we've had an ordinance change on that or if that was a typo or what, what the situation was.
Can I just clarify that? I think that was when the, the plan that was recommended for denial was on the board. So the code requires the twenty-foot buffer, which is this. And because the building was set right up onto the buffer line, staff was recommending then to add the five foot for the sidewalk to the back of the building.
Because of the position of the building on the lot being in the rear as opposed to the front.
Correct. So the twenty-foot buffer was, was the actual buffer, the five, extra five foot set the building off.
That was to, to add some protection for the folks so they wouldn't have somebody overlooking in their backyard.
I think as much as also for egress protection, likely going to be some sort of emergency egress out of that building from a fire and building standard.
Okay. So that's where the five-foot differential comes up, okay?
The twenties code.
Twenties code.
And I don't know if this is related because of course I don't work for this. I know the previous, one of the previous plans from another interest is emergency.
Subdivision.
Subdivision, okay, sorry. Anyways, we have a lot of traffic going through there now that Oak Chase Drive where I live at has opened up to the school, park and whatnot. The kids come through there every day like, like Daytona, you know, come through there every day. Flock is crazy. Have, we're playing Dodge cars right now, cars on the street, barrels everywhere. But the entrance getting into this place is going to be a mess. Feel sorry for... And I think it's not going to help our neighborhood at all. I really feel for both sides because I understand both sides. I think we got, I don't know how many houses in that neighborhood, there's a lot of houses.
Mr. McKee, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up so we can get to some of the other neighbors.
Well, let me just tell you this, I'll wrap it up with this. This is from, this is from me personally. My wife and I moved to Columbia County years ago because of the schools, neighborhoods, all the good things that come with Columbia County. Man, that, I feel like Furious Ferry Road, it used to be a nice road with a few grocery stores and whatnot. I know progress is progress. I'm going to look to, I think it's a turnoff. People who are moving to this area, now they're going from our area to Grove Town. Next it's going to be Harlem. That's just my two cents and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming out. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and, sir, we'll get to you next and then we'll close the public hearing. Please give us your name and home address.
Jennifer Lowers, five-oh-six Oak Chase Drive. I'm actually here to say thank you. Last time, we raised a lot of concerns and you listened to them and you did exactly what we asked you to do. I don't see a lot of difference in this plan. It doesn't take our consideration as neighbors into account. And so what I'm asking you to do is shake things up again and don't approve this plan. It is not better for our neighborhood. It doesn't address any of the issues we had before with traffic, with flooding. We've learned a lot from Jones Creek since this last plan was approved, his first plan. We know now that when you pave stuff like that, there's nowhere for the rain to go, no matter how good you do it. So let's not get locked in another battle and cost our neighbors their homes. That's what I'm asking you to do. And I know it's a big ask and I thank you last time for even moving to disapprove when Mr. Lawrence wasn't here. And before you tell me to wrap it up, I want to remind you, I'm not wasting your time. This man is wasting your time. He's had years to pre-create a viable plan and I know that's a thirty thousand dollar pipe, but think about this. When his neighbor's home burned, he prayed with her and he offered to buy that property from her for a hell of a lot more than thirty thousand dollars. So if he had that money then, he has the money to move the pipe. He doesn't need this plan. It's a pain to his neighbors. There are very few people that get a chance on this earth to be an answered prayer. Alls he has to do is listen, not keep moving forward. And I am asking you all, if he listens to our prayers and asks to make this property residential and fix this mistake, support him wholeheartedly to do that. There is nothing stopping him. We can right this wrong. So, Mr. Lawrence, please listen to our neighbors, be an answered prayer and rezone this. And I'm not asking you to do anything I wouldn't do. I saw that he got that easement for only ten dollars. So if that document's true, here's twenty dollars. Double his money on his initial investment out of my own pocket. I have nothing to gain, gentlemen. Okay? So that's all I'm asking. And if he doesn't have the integrity to do that, then deal with him accordingly. And somebody, when that awkward moment comes for you to move to disapprove, please do so. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please come forward, give us your name and home address and we'll end the public hearing with you.
My name's John Arnold. I live at five-sixteen Crystal Creek West. Moved to Forest Creek in nineteen ninety-two when you remember Furious Ferry was a little two-lane road and you see what it's become now. Not going to repeat everything, but I do want to emphasize the traffic. When there are accidents right there at our intersection, they're bad because people are flying down that hill. You're going to increase the traffic there, no doubt. And the other, the other point I wanted to reemphasize is if you saw the picture of the house that is there now that his business is in, compared to that monstrosity that he's talking about building, there's just no comparison. It's bad for the neighborhood. The whole thing about moving the utility, that's a farce just to build this monst... monstrosity and assume there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And with that, we'll close the public hearing. I'll accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve with conditions, File RZ 221206, major put revision, thirty-eight oh one Park Lane to revise the approval.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor to approve, raise your right hand. Motion to disapprove, motion passes four one. Mr. Butler, File RZ 221208, rezoning from RA to M1.
Senator Sheriff's, a request for rezoning out of thirty-eight ninety-four Gordon Highway for a twenty-acre portion of this property, currently zoned RA residential agricultural. Our request is for rezoning to M1 Light Industrial for a proposed, uh, trailer business that will be doing some sales, some, uh, also some manufacturing, also some, uh, repair to those, uh, trailers. Here's the location of the property, in the south side of Gordon Highway. It is close to Leitner Mill, uh, down the street. We'll see if this thing actually goes away. It doesn't. It ain't go away. All right. We're having some issues with that. This shows current zoning of the property, again, currently zoned RA residential agricultural. Uh, you do have a lot of M1 across the street that has been there since the county initiated zoning, um, so it's one that you may not be aware to a lot of folks, but there's lots of M1 already out there. Uh, there's also an S1 that you can see there with the orange, uh, that is actually zoned for a single-family residential home, and that, everything else is primarily zoned RA residential, uh, residential agricultural as well. Here's a real view of the property, again, it's mostly a, um, just a field at this point, and the plat of the property. So, the request, uh, for this evening is for an approximately twenty-eight thousand square foot building that will again be doing the trailer sales, um, manufacturing, and also, uh, repair. You have a trailer display here at the front, and then you have the building itself, again, broken out into bays with the, the different uses inside of them. Then you do have associated parking, um, then also the, the drive aisles around it. Uh, we'll have a variance, so we'll be hearing, um, next up, the, in regards to stormwater pond, and also the, uh, the access easement that we see there. Again, the entirety of the property is not being rezoned with this request, and there is some opportunity for, uh, further development of the property on the remaining, uh, portion there. There's a building plan, again, this isn't locked in or anything, but it gives an idea of what the applicant is proposing at this point. And in terms of future land use, i- it is rural out there, but again, it is along the employment corridor. Uh, we've heard a little bit about some corridors this evening. Uh, this one is specifically to allow for employment, um, as the name implies, that doesn't, that it does include Light Industrial. Uh, there is a smattering of it on Gordon Highway, uh, but again, not a lot. Uh, this is basically middle of, of, of all of that, um, and it is also the first one that's actually being rezoned, that wasn't already rezoned, you know, back in the seventies, essentially. But again, with the future land use map, uh, this does fit within that corridor. Uh, so because of that, staff has recommended approval with the following condition, uh, for the rezoning from RA to M1 for a portion of property. Uh, this is from, this is from the Health Department, requires a Level Three soil survey, permanent subletage of soil installation of a commercial subject system. That is one that would be required anyway, but they wanted the applicant to be aware of it up front, uh, to go ahead and get that moving, um, if this looks favorable as they go forward. Now, that includes staff recommendation.
Thanks, sir. Sir, I appreciate you removing your hat when you came in. Uh, this is a public hearing, uh, is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and add anything to the staff's presentation?
Uh, my name is Billy Williams. Um, my family's been here most a hundred years. They're about in the CSRA area. Um, I say all that to say, right down the road, I have a big farm. I'm from the area, I support the area. Uh, December of last year, I bought quality trailers of Harlem, which is brought to Joey Reed, who is now our, our shop supervisor, takes care of all of our welding and things like that, uh, takes care of our guys back there. We are growing, and where we're located, we have no ability to move past where we're at. So, I bought that because I, I raise cattle, and I have hayfields, and I bought that for a hayfield, uh, and it'd been up for sale for a long time. I know some of, uh, some of the neighbors, uh, it was a family-owned estate all around it, I guess, several family members owned it, it was for sale for a long time. I paid more than it was worth at the time, but it's five minutes from the other farm, so it made for a great location to bring my tractor down and, and, and be able to do things like that. But as we took on some new contracts, we couldn't do it where we're at. We don't have enough room, and steel, if you know anything about steel, you can't keep it outside. Thus, the large proposal for the, the building broke up into small pieces, but it's under one roof, so we can keep stuff stored where it's not sitting out as an eyesore. We're gonna try to keep it as what I would want it to be, 'cause I live literally five minutes from here. Um, I, I do want it to be that way, uh, just because as it grows, I wanna be able to maintain that, but the main reason for that much under roof is because I can't keep steel outside it rust.
You know, you mentioned growth. Is, is this growth of the site or growth of your business on that site?
Growth to the business on the site. So, I have, we currently have contracts where we're building frames already, um, but we can't, we just can't do it. We're on a very small piece, and I've, I sell trailers, and we make frames, and we've got contracts to do more, but we can't. So, we've already, since December, we've almost tripled our staff for hiring. Um, there, there's some great, the field I came out of, uh, allowed me to create some contract opportunities to take what we already had there. Uh, Mr. Reed has been there in that, within a mile of downtown Harlem for thirty years with quality trailers. So, I'm just basically taking my personal property that I had for my hayfield and converting it into allowing us to have, 'cause we needed the road frontage, because we actually sell our trailers too.
Okay, so you're gonna be the only tenant on that property?
For the foreseeable future, we, we also carry, uh, Carolina carports, so we have demos, which, uh, I don't know if I can draw on this thing. So, in this area here, we, we would like to, I didn't propose it for here, because I really, I, I need the, the space for building the trailers, uh, and I can keep the space down the road for what we have, but we have about five demo units that are just still structures that people can see and say, yeah, I want something similar to this. That's what we kinda left that open area for, 'cause it's just an open area for people to visually see, and this back area over here, as we're making frames and they get painted, we're not selling everything up front here that, so we make them, we, we thought that would be a great place to keep some things.
Be a lay-down yard.
Sorry, what?
Be somewhat of a lay-down yard.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it's kinda the way it's set up, these houses up here are setting a little bit below on the road, and so, and there's trees right here. You can't even see this open field from the road. Now, I don't know what's gonna develop there over, you know, years to come, that may change, but our goal right now is just to use the open space, and it's gonna take a while. We're, we're not there yet. We're, we're on a pretty small area, confined area now, um, and I keep, I keep frames stored on my farm, just because I don't have the room. So, that's kind of, I just wanted to say that, and hopefully that helps.
So, so why did you, why did you ask for the M? Just heavy industrial category, is that?
Not heavy, light industrial. I, I didn't, I, my understanding is heavy, heavy industrial is when you're, you're dealing with chemicals and trucking, things that are bringing heavy equipment in and out. We, we do have a tractor-trailer that comes in once a week and brings us steel, but it's not like, you're not, you don't have stuff coming in and out.
Everything potentially is light industrial use.
Yes, sir. That is M1, right? Did I, I made a mistake?
Yeah, no, that's fine. Again, he, so, a while back, you worked with the Development Authority.
Yes, sir.
And that's where all this came from, is that's how it was determined, here's, here's the zone classification, it's gonna work for what you wanna do.
Okay, so the Development Authority recommended M1?
No, I recommended it.
You recommended M1, okay.
Yeah.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Uh, it has been brought to my attention that some of the neighbors there are afraid that they're not concerned about your business, but they're afraid if we zoned it M1, and you stay there six months, and you sell it to somebody that has it, really has M1, the damage is gonna do to their property. Now, an alternative to satisfy your neighbors and for you to have your business there would be to zone it S1, and then you could do what you wanna do, but they would be happy because they feel somewhat protected.
So, S1's special purpose?
S1's a special use, so if you wanna do trailers, do your lay-down yard, that kinda thing, you can specify the use of that entire tract, and that's all you can do there. So, if you, if you wanna do something else, you'd have to come forward and go through a rezoning to either add that special, that use to the special use and do a revision to the plan, or you'd have to, to request to do a rezoning to M or C, or whatever you decided you wanted to do in the future, and go through this same process.
That, that may be okay. Uh, I would like to clarify, we do have a parts, uh, where we sell trailer parts, and we service trailers and have for years.
Is that, is that a retail or a wholesale business?
So, you guys...
As long as you list it on S1 when you begin, it's not a problem.
I'm not as familiar with that.
We're not, we're not going to ask you to do something to jeopardize your business, we're trying to satisfy both sides. So, if you, if you took every item that you wanna do on your business and list it as S1 when you apply, you can do all of it. It's just a different zoning, and the neighbors are protected because you couldn't sell it to a big industrial type of situation.
To dive in, has, has the commissioner said anything that's not accurate?
No, I mean, you would have, so you, you've already had a, the beginnings of a narrative. You have one that describes, here's what I'm, what I'm doing on the property. You would expand on that and add anything extra, anything additional. Um, you would also have, you take this plan and add the buffers onto it, that sort of thing. So, it's one that you're, you're moving in that direction, uh, but again, it's just two different classifications. Again, M1 allows for a multitude of things within that classification.
What all, what all's in M1?
I mean, you could do office warehouse, you could do, um, self-storage, you could get a contractor's office with storage. Um, again, things that are gonna be similar, but may not be as preferable as how your, your business is designed. I mean, it's one that yours is, a lot of things can happen inside, and the things that are outside that are in storage can be stored pretty easily, and can be screened, and can be hidden. Um, so it's one that, there's, it's not really a bad use per se with, with what you're describing, but there could be something, it could be detrimental. But again, with the buffer requirements, it's a forty-foot buffer, forty-foot structural buffer against residential. It's one that there's also, that's gonna remain no matter how we zone this thing, if it happens, it's gonna be at least forty feet. So, there's always gonna be protection there. It's not one that you can just go in and clear everything out and be right up against the, uh, up against residential.
If, if, if this is something that you would consider, what we'd need to do, rather than, than, than go forward with the requested rezoning, which we can, and, and, and we'd have a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone, is you could ask to withdraw without prejudice, get with staff, and I guess we would have to re-advertise as S1, and you'd come back in front of this body. And, but now, withdraw without prejudice means you can come back at any time. If you withdraw with prejudice, you can't come back for six months? Okay. Just, just to give you all the options here.
To be clear, if he withdraws without prejudice and comes back with, say, for example, the S1, he would have to reapply, pay the new fee.
Correct.
Go through the entire process.
But the commissioners might very well waive that fee. You could ask for that.
This way, it'd be a win-win. You're satisfying your neighbor, but you get what you want, get the property to do your business on, and everybody's happy. If you go the way with M1, there's gonna be some aggravated people, and we're just trying to be reasonable both ways.
Well, the reason why, when we first talked about it, I looked at Pollard's property across, and it's all M1, has been for a long time. It fit, I mean, it's directly across the street.
I know right where it is.
And I know, um, I know if you look, you look here, we've got a homeowner here that has, I don't know, maybe fourteen to twenty acres, uh, their barn is back here on this corner, but their house is up here, it's not right, it's not right up on there. They have a barn, barn back there with a few horses, and then there's really nothing else surrounding that but these houses up here, which one of those is S1 and for sale. Um, I know one of the other owners, he, he didn't indicate, he may be here and change his mind, but he didn't indicate there was any issues, 'cause he's got some crackheads living right across the street from him. So, my point is, is that area, when I talk about it, this, this is not...
There are issues, there are people who, who have a problem with it.
Okay.
That's the, if you, if you go to S1, you're likely, more likely to get approval than you will.
So, we're saying, if I try to go M1, which would actually be better for my business, I will be declined?
It wouldn't be about a far your business, because your business is gonna be just as profitable either way. It would just be the, the, let's say it'd be the neighborly thing to do. I'll leave it at that.
But if I withdraw, then I'm, how long before I can?
You could, you could be back with these folks tomorrow.
What's that?
You'd be back in with staff tomorrow.
Okay.
But hi- hi- his question is, what's the timeline? And, and so, if you were to reapply, um, you were looking at, uh, the deadline is next Thursday, you're gonna be on the January nineteenth planning commission, I don't recall the BOC, what is it?
I think it's February seventh.
Yeah, first.
I think, I think I'm okay with that.
Month out.
Everybody seems to be okay with that. My G's.
Whoops, I'm sorry, wrong here.
Okay. All right, so, um, I just not as familiar with that. I always thought churches or other things were S1, I didn't realize that.
No, you, you, and S1 is what you want it to be, but it's restricted to only that. That's what's providing the protection. You can write it up just the way this thing's written up. Under an S1, the difference is, you can't sell it to a chemical plant or whatever.
Now, that I part of, I understand. I don't want that in my mind.
Any changes to what you're doing would then require yourself or the next applicant to come back. Change the parameters.
All right.
You could sell it as is to somebody, and they could stay.
So, I'm okay with that, so what do I need to do from here?
You need to, to ask to, to withdraw your proposal without prejudice.
So, I would like to withdraw my proposal without prejudice. Um, are we, do I say anything else about it?
No, sir, you're fine.
That's making you a good neighbor, my friend.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, ma'am. So, the lady first. Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Um, I am Marla Logan, and if you pull up the previous site plan, I'm located, I am actually, Carolyn Walker was the original owner of this one farm, and we bought the, this part of the farm that, um...
And you can draw on that map.
Okay, so we're buying this property here, which touches up back here. We own this property here and this property here. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. This is me here, and then, um, there's another property that's here that I'm purchasing, so it will directly impact me here, 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 and here. This is, um, we have horses, um, and we're very active hunters, and, um, we have children, and I'm not opposed to the front part of Gordon Highway becoming developed. I would like to stop it here and not really impose on these people here, because what happens here kinda goes into this, um, and the future land growth, um, for the future plan, and I think it's, um, this slide, shows future development of this whole corridor, um, it shows future development of this whole property here. Um, so that's why I'm concerned, because I live here and own the house here, um, and if this is M1, and this is M1, and we do M1 here, the traffic here, um, to pull up on Leitner Mill, and it, it looks a lot farther than what it actually is, but there's curves, and there's big hills on this way, so I feel like if you did the M1 here, here, and here, you would have a major, if somebody ever developed something across the street, a major influx of traffic in that area, which would make it difficult. It's already hard to come out of Leitner Mill, because the road is actually at a fork, so you actually have to turn to the right to be able to make a left turn, because you can't see because of the, the corners, so...
Draw on M1. M1 has been withdrawn.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is there is M1 already across the street in two different places, so...
Right, but he's already withdrawn M1, so...
That was my complaint, was, I, I had written an email and, and suggested the...
It's over with, he being a good neighbor.
Yes, yes.
It's spinning our wheels now.
Yes, so, um, I just was concerned about the future growth of all the back property, Yes, so I just was concerned about the future growth of all the back property and, you know, just didn't want anybody in our backyard. That was it, that we hunt, fish, and play in, so...
Gotcha.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? All right, seeing none, yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Oh, no. My name is Gaskell, and I live on 429 Lightner Mill Road, and all this place was my family's from 1962 to Mr. Williams bought it. I spoke with him. I don't want to see it go any farther than that either, over this way across the top of my field, because like I said, I still hunt this corner right here, and I've been shooting doves and having livestock my whole life. I feel like it'd have changed my way of life. I told him, I don't mind. I hate to even say this, but I'm okay with the trailer place. I'm okay with him developing road frontage. It's just I don't want it wrapping around me. That's about all I got to say about that. I don't want to try to tell somebody what to do with the land, but when it poses on me, I got a little problem with it.
All right, thanks, sir. And with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and accept a motion to accept or deny the request to withdraw without prejudice.
Chairman, I make a motion to accept the request to withdraw without prejudice.
Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to allow the withdrawal without prejudice passes 5-0. Mr. Butler, do we need to hear the variance on this property?
Yes, we'll send you to go through with it. I mean, again, it has a public hearing attached to it. It's been advertised to go through all of it. So again, we have a variance at 3894 Gordon Highway to, the variance section 8139, buffers and screening for property currently zoned, R residential agricultural. Again, it is only a 20-acre portion of that property. There's a location of the property on South Side Gordon Highway, and also the zoning, and currently zoned R residential agricultural. We're not going to go into all that. We've seen it before. An area view of the property and the platte. So the issues with this current plan, and again, Mr. Williams, I would definitely hit us under advisement as we move forward with the S1, is this shows where you have buffer intrusions. You have the access easement on the north side to the remainder of the property. You also have the stormwater pond on the south side, also all of the trailer display area, and also the paved driveway around the, around the prop, around the, excuse me, around the building itself. All of the, that's kind of why we have the request to have this buffer changed perhaps. There is, at some point, going to have to be an access easement through this, so there will have to be some sort of intrusion to the buffer at some point. Overall, from staff's standpoint, we would, again, if this were moving forward as it currently is, would require this easement to be redrawn, to come down and come across, and not only go through one time, but again, stay away from the residential. And there would be no reduction in the 40-foot structural buffer on the south, eastern, on the eastern, southern, or the northern side of the property.
Would you feel more comfortable with withdrawing this as well and letting this come through with the S1 in case the site design changes?
So yeah, so the S1, you're basically going to integrate that into it.
Okay.
So that's not really an issue. And again, we're going to approve with the following conditions, again, with the reduction of the buffer is not approved. This thing is fun right now. On eastern side of property lines, access easement track B is fully redrawn, and again, access easement track B is not approved. It's really the cross buffer between track A and track B.
So can we administratively withdraw this, or does the applicant need to?
He has to request it.
Sir, would you mind coming back up to the microphone if you're so inclined to ask us to withdraw without prejudice, this variance, please?
Do I need to say my name?
Please. Just to keep him honest.
Request to withdraw without prejudice, the variance.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve or to reject the request to withdraw without prejudice. variance 221203.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the withdrawal, the request to withdraw without prejudice, this variance.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to accept the withdrawal passes 5-0. All right, our final item in public hearing for the evening is conditional use for a gym, file RZ 221209. Ms. Montgomery?
Yes, sir, this is a request for a conditional use for a gym at 472 Flowing Wells Road. Property is located, actually on the north side of Mason McKnight Jr. Parkway. The address is a carryover from when it was part of a larger parcel that did reach out to Flowing Wells Road. It is currently split-zoned, the eastern portion of the property being zoned M1 light industrial, and the western portion being zoned C2 general commercial. That rezoning happened in 2015. There were some conditions on that rezoning regarding buffers against the residential that would likely have applied to the currently M1 portion of the property, but essentially, as they went through the process, they reduced the amount of the property they rezoned. So the, those buffer conditions do not apply to the M1 portion of the property that we're dealing with. Surrounding zoning is C2 to most sides, and then R2 for single-family residential to the north. This is an aerial view of the site. It is a office warehouse complex. We do have multiple suites and multiple tenants in each of these buildings. And this is the existing sites. You can see the existing office warehouses. The applicants are going to be located in the back building of the site, way back here in this corner, and actually on the backside of the building. So this is their actual suite on the backside of the building. Their intent is to use this suite to offer group gym classes. The business would operate primarily 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday to Friday, and between 10:00 AM and 9:00 PM on weekends. Now, they wouldn't be there operating full-time. It is a class-based business, so the actual hours would be based on the scheduled class times. This is an existing business currently located over on Bobby Jones', so this is a relocation. They do have up to 20 clients in their busier classes, but those tend to take place in the evenings. We did work with them on kind of occupancy and parking concerns, and they said the larger classes do tend to be their 7:00 PM class, rather than their during-the-day classes. So initially, the proposed parking areas were shown in the yellow here. You can see their leased space on the back of the building identified in the top right corner. The main concern with this was this yellow parking area around the back of the building. That is actually the fire lane. So Fire Marshal did indicate that the parking in that area would not be acceptable. We did relay that to the applicants and work with them on adjusting that plan. So they did provide us the revised parking plan showing just using the parking space there on the eastern side of the existing site. That is a shared parking area, so all of the businesses on the site do have access to it. And we did do a couple of site visits at different times of day to kind of see how that space is used at this time. So this was midday on the site. You can see it's, there's some available spaces, but it is fairly full. Some of the spaces are signed for employee parking. That would be enforced by the landlord, so if they're not enforcing it, or not enforcing it after hours, that may or may not be a huge concern, but they are signed that way. You can see in the evenings, there's a lot more available parking. Again, typical kind of business hours. This was about 5:30, so this was later in the evening after a lot of typical businesses have closed. I will say some of the businesses were still open, but you can see that there's a lot more available parking in the evening. So the main concern is to ensure that the parking doesn't intrude on that fire lane. The parking area currently is not striped, as we would expect for public parking for commercial use. So we do have a condition requiring striping of the parking spaces to be used, ensuring that that leaves adequate fire access. So basically, that that striped parking stops early enough that a fire truck could get around a parked car and around the building to get back there, and then installing the fire lane signage, clearly indicating that there's no parking in that fire lane. In terms of the use itself, this is in the Employment Center. This is intended for a commercial use. So the use itself is not really a concern in this area. This is a commercial service, and it is appropriate in the Activity Center. There was a previous request for a gym on this property that was also approved. As far as we know, that hasn't caused any additional issues, but it does kind of speak to the shift in this area towards a more commercial rather than industrial use. That could potentially cause issues on the site as it continues. And eventually, the site will most likely need to be redeveloped for actual commercial users, rather than the office warehouse and kind of the light industrial uses it was developed for. However, as I said, the gym itself has offset peak times from the typical businesses on this site, so it most likely can operate here without causing any real concerns. Staff is recommending approval with the conditions that the conditional use applies only to unit K3B on the subject parcel, and that they submit a plan showing striping of the public parking spaces and demarcation of the fire lane to our department. This will be reviewed by us and by the Fire Marshal prior to the work being performed, and then the striping would have to be installed prior to approval of the business license. Environmental compliance also provided a condition that the site does need an RPC backflow installed on the divesting meter, and that would also have to happen before the business license would be approved. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yes, ma'am. Is there anything you'd like to add to the staff presentation? Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
My name's Kimberly Hedrick. My address is 1445 Collins Drive, partners. And for the conditions, we've already spoken with the owner's agent, and they have said that they will be doing the striping and the fire stuff since it is their property.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ 22-12-09, condition M at 472 Flowing Wells Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes 5-0. We have no legal matters? Do we have any staff or Commissioner comments? I know, Mr. Futch, that change is coming up January 1, and one of them is you're being rotated off. I'd like to thank you for the four years you've served.
Thank you. The privilege to work with the staff shall be me much smarter, and it's a hard task. In a person, I think the Commissioners are here, because y'all educated me as well in learning. Critical. Good luck.
We appreciate your service. And there's one other minor change coming up on January 1. After 15 years, I'm rotating off planning and zoning. And Commissioner Malir has seen fit to appoint Mr. James Van Meter over here in the corner as their new representative from District 1. I'm sure you'll serve with this august group and fit in very well. I would like to thank the Commissioners for their confidence they've had in me for all these years. I'd like to thank the staff. You all have made somewhat of, this somewhat of an easy, it was an easy job to start with, but...
What they say.
Yeah, but I really, really appreciate what you all have done and have a new appreciation for what the county does and what the employees do for the county that most residents don't ever see. And again, it, this has been an honor to serve with you all. I think Nana, you're the only face that hasn't changed in the 15 years. I came on in '07, and you're the only constant that whole time. And I've really enjoyed getting to know you and working with you. And gentlemen, I'm going to miss our gatherings, and again, I appreciate the wisdom and the guidance and the friendship over the years, and look forward to working with you in another role in the future. And as always, if there, any of you all, any staff, any residents need my help for anything, my phone's listed. I always answer it, and I look forward to seeing you all in another role in the county. That being said, this, open for public comments. If there's anybody who'd like to come forward and add anything for the record? Seeing none, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you very much. But with that being said, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
For the last time, meeting is adjourned at 7:42. Thank you all very much. It's been an honor.